Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Good evening and welcome to the October 2nd meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Zakajanian.
President.
Dubai.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Sinanian.
Here. Today's flag salute will be led by Councilmember Najarian. After the salute, please remain standing for the invocation.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us join in prayer for our city as we ask for guidance and wisdom for tonight's meeting. President Harry Truman once said that, quote, "America was not built on fear. America was built on courage, on imagination, and unbeatable determination to do the job at hand." Let us live by these words and remember that as Americans, we can achieve whatever we put our minds to as long as we work together. Immigrant and native-born, people of all genders, faiths, and persuasions, we pray for safe neighborhoods and prosperity and ask that we work together to make Glendale a wonderful place for everyone who lives and works here. We ask that you look after all those who serve in your military, in our military, and pray that they return home safely. Pray for peace tonight and always. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Will you please present the report?
The agenda for the October 2nd, 2018, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Friday, September 28, 2018, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is presentation appointments. Today is agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, October 9, 2018.
Mr. Galanian.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. For October 9, 2018, there is one item on the agenda for Glendale Housing Authority commencing at 3:00 P.M., and that's from Director of Community Development regarding density bonus lottery. In the same afternoon, we have a special meeting of the Glendale City Council, again, commencing at 3:00 P.M., and that's from Director of Community Development regarding art and entertainment district professional services agreement for placemaking, urban design, and technical services. On that day in the evening, commencing at 6:00 P.M., agenda for the city council, there are a number of consent items. First one being from Public Works Department regarding Interstate 210 freeway sand wall construction project, followed by Director of Library Arts and Culture regarding acceptance of grant funds for the California Library Literacy and English Acquisition Service Program Grant, and the last one from City Treasurer regarding destruction of certain records. On the action items, there's a report from City Treasurer regarding the adoption of the city's investment policy for fiscal year 2018-2019, followed by another report from City Treasurer. It's an annual report for fiscal year ending June 30, 2018. Then we have a report from Director of Community Development regarding request authorizing acceptance of grant funds from the State of California Department of Transportation in amount of $300,000 for the West Glendale Transportation and Land Use Study. And lastly, from General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding preparation of environmental impact report for the biogas renewable generation project. We have one item on the hearings from Director of Community Development regarding a public hearing on the Appeal of Design Review Board's approval of DRB case number PDR 1627565 located at 1829 Kirk B. Road. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Next item, please.
Next item at 3B is Mayor's commendations for Glendale Tech Week sponsors.
Okay, and before I invite the Tech Week sponsors to the podium, we have a video?
Yes, we do.
The Third Annual Glendale Tech Week featured seven jam-packed days of all-you-can tech. Over 3,500 entrepreneurs, funders, startup founders, and leaders in a variety of industries gathered in downtown Glendale to participate in our action-packed lineup. Over 30 sessions featured panels and talks with experts, a career fair, VC matching, mentoring and networking opportunities, VR and AR experiences, mixers, and more. Plus, this year's Glendale Tech Week included nine events for youth and families. The region's growing tech industry showed up in full force to discuss the latest in artificial intelligence, bio and health tech, machine learning, digital media and marketing, software design, virtual reality, cybersecurity, robotics, and more. Pitch Fest, our very own Shark Tank-style startup competition, did not disappoint as 11 finalists competed for a $60,000 prize package. With over 300 jobs up for grabs, hundreds of job seekers flocked to the Tech Career Fair hosted by the Virdugo Job Center. Recruiters from some of the region's top employers, including Age of Learning, ServiceTitan, Caltech, LegalZoom, .818, and Vonexa were on site in search of fresh talent. Entrepreneurs had a variety of opportunities to connect with VC funders throughout the week and during Meet the Funders, a speed networking event where startups had valuable face time with potential investors. Glendale Tech Week would not be possible without the support of local businesses and tech firms, including Avery Dennison, .818, Vonexa, Downtown Glendale Association, Glendale Arts, ServiceTitan, Lanair Group, Applied Earth Sciences, the GCC Professional Development Center, Adventist Health, and GWP. Glendale Tech Week is all about bringing together ideas, capital, and talent to foster mutually beneficial connections. But we didn't forget to factor in some fun. In addition to a handful of mixers that took place throughout the week, over 500 attendees joined us for our closing party and tech awards at the Americana at Brand. Join us for our monthly Tech on Tap meetups to continue the conversation and download our podcast to get your tech fix on the go. Sign up for Glendale Tech updates at glendaletechweek.com. Stay connected on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and LinkedIn.
Okay, thank you. So, of course, our Tech Week, which was a huge success and only in the third year of its existence, is quite an event now, would not be possible without the sponsors, the sponsors of Tech Week and the Pitch Fest sponsors, all of whom or most of them are here today?
Yes, they are.
They are, and we'd love having you back, and we are so appreciative for your sponsorship and so looking forward to continued cooperation and doing this over and over again and expanding, making it bigger and better in the future to come. And I'd love to invite you up so we can present you with some commendations and perhaps come down and take some photos with you.
Yes.
So, all at once or one by one? Okay, we're gonna take photos with the group, so we might as well just come. Yeah, why don't we, why don't we all just go down and help pass out the commendations and then we'll take the photos?
Thank you for your support.
I'd like to take this opportunity to invite Kiana Fong to come on up. We have a commendation. Kiana, I had the opportunity to judge the kids' startup, Pitch Fest, and they ranged from ages six years old to, how old are you, Kiana?
Twelve.
Twelve years old, and Kiana was our winner. And Kiana, do you want to tell us about your, your project that you won the prize for?
Basically, I have a handmade clay jewelry shop called Thousand Bamboos in which me and my mom design and sell clay jewelries to others.
On the internet as well?
Um, yes.
Yes, and what do you use the funds for?
Um, I use my funds to donate the money to SBCA and #LunchBag, which is a foundation where people make lunch bags and pass them out to the homeless.
Wonderful. Let's give Kiana.
Thank you, Kiana, if you want to present it to our.
Okay, so now I'll read your commendation. "In recognition of winning this year's Kids Edition of Pitch Fest at the Third Annual Glendale Tech Week, I commend your display of entrepreneurship and originality with your handcrafted jewelry shop, Thousand Bamboos. Your talent is truly inspirational. On behalf of the city of Glendale, I wish you continued success." And this is signed by our mayor, Zari Sinanian. So, did you want to present this?
No, you should present it. Okay, thank you. Kiana, I wasn't there for the kids' Pitch Fest, but I did judge the adult Pitch Fest. And that was my, I'd done it before, and I'm, I can only imagine how amazing your presentation must have been, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, these young ones are entrepreneurs, and they can market their, their crafts and their projects like you can't believe. So, Kiana, congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Aaron, and Aaron is the leader of this kids' Pitch Fest.
And I'm going to read the names of the silver and bronze sponsors and who are.
Lot of love in that podium.
Mobile Forming, Pacific Western Bank, Bank of America, Opus Bank, Inversologic, Revert, Louis Roker Rothenberg Christie, Connect2 Communications, Armenian Engineers and Scientists of America. And this is only a partial list of the sponsors that supported the effort. I also want to make sure that we acknowledge properly the Pitch Fest committee and acknowledge them individually. Ara Aslanian, Alex Bruno, he was here, I don't know if he's left already, but Ani Torosian, Anna Quintana, Armin Vartanyan, who's in the back, Silvana Arzino Toledo, Jessica First, and Zachary Levine. I know Zachary was here too. So, again, thank you very much for your support, and we look forward to doing this together again next year. Next item, please.
Next item is a proclamation designating the month of October as Walktober and Walk to School and Pedestrian Safety Awareness Month.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Ms. Beers, Mr. Galanian, and staff. My name's Juan Gonzalez. I'm the project manager for Glendale's Safe Routes to School program. And today I have the privilege of introducing you to Pat Hines from Safe Moves, our Safe Routes to School consultant, and Dr. Eileen Magren from Glendale Unified to accept a proclamation in honor of Walktober.
Thank you and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Sinanian and council members and city manager. We just want to thank you. We appreciate you. This is a very important event where, for Glendale Unified School District. October 10 next week, we invite you. It is pleasant parents to walk with their students, and we see and I've seen Mayor Sinanian and many of you present, so we appreciate you, and it's an amazing support of Glendale, City of Glendale. Thank you.
Good evening. I wanted to share with you, this will be my last year here in Glendale, working with the schools, and I have to say when we first started, there were a few schools that were very supportive of Walk to School Day. And through the years, they've really stepped up, and we have 100% participation from all of the schools, and they're owning their own events. They're out finding their own paperwork, their forms, their incentives. They're organizing their parents and their teachers, and it's so great to see them build on sustainability. So, the city of Glendale will be having Walk to School Days every single year for years to come. And also, the goal too of the, the program is to create walking school buses and bike trains. So, kids are not only walking once a year, but they're walking every day to school. You should be very proud. I speak on a national level at all Safe Routes to School conferences. I always use Glendale as the perfect example of how a city partners with the school district, with the residents, to make this program so successful. You should be very proud. I know I am. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And we also have a very brief video to promote next week's event. Glendale, it's time to pull out those tennis shoes and lace them up because Walktober is just around the corner. The city of Glendale and Glendale Unified School District invite all schools to participate in International Walk to School Day on Wednesday, October 10. Join us as communities in over 40 countries walk and bike to school on the same day. Why should your family participate? It's fun. It promotes physical activities that help prevent serious health issues. It promotes safety. It provides a cleaner environment. It reduces traffic congestion. And finally, it creates a sense of community and improves neighborhood connections. For more information on how your school can participate on Wednesday, October 10, contact Glendale's Safe Routes to School partner, Safe Moves, at 818-786-4614. Okay, great. Thank you. So, this is a very important day for many of us. Certainly is for me. I, I walk every year, and I walk with four of my kids and about 50 other neighborhood kids that are all going either to Keppel or, well, until last year was only Keppel. Now it's Keppel and Tope. And the only question I ask every year is why do we only do it once a year? We should do this more often, and, you know, I think the point is to develop a lifestyle, a certain sort of behavior, as opposed to do it once a year and feel good about it and then forget about it until next October. Hopefully, we accomplish that goal.
That same question came up at the school board meeting about an hour ago. And as Pat mentioned, she has the infrastructure for a walking school bus program where schools can do it once a month, every week, however frequently they want to do that. So, before the grant runs out, Pat will have met with all the schools to show them how to do it, you know, as often as they want to do this.
Very good. So, based on that, I have a proclamation that I'd like to present to you, which states, whereas all the people of Glendale are pedestrians, and as pedestrians, we have a right to safe streets in our communities. And whereas the city of Glendale is taking an active role in improving pedestrian safety and reducing pedestrian-related collisions through its community outreach and safe routes to school programs. And whereas the B Streets Smart Glendale Educational and Encouragement Campaign is the city of Glendale's effort to make city streets safe for all road users, pedestrians, motorists, and bicyclists. And whereas pedestrians will have the highest priority in urban design, transportation, planning, and construction. And whereas the city of Glendale is continuously implementing safety improvements and initiating enforcement operations to enhance pedestrian safety citywide. And whereas the people of Glendale experience joys of walking as a source of transportation, health, fitness, and recreation. And whereas there are many beautiful designations to walk, destinations to walk to and enjoy throughout the city. And whereas parents, educators, community members, and leaders can support safe routes to school programs which enable children to safely walk and bicycle in our community. Whereas children, parents, and community leaders from around the world are joining together to walk to school in October to evaluate walking conditions in their communities. And now therefore I, Zara Sinanian, Mayor of the City of Glendale, to hereby proclaim the month of October as Walktober and Walk to School and Pedestrian Safety Awareness Month and encourage everyone to consider the safety and health of all of our citizens this month and throughout the year. And I'm, it's signed by me, obviously, but I'm gonna ask Councilmember Garpetian to present it to you. And we have a comment or possibly more comments from council members. Councilmember Najarian?
So, your point is well taken, Mayor Sinanian, about developing a lifestyle. Perhaps we can get a report back, understanding what the impediments are to walking to school, whether it's safety concerns, whether it's geographical terrain, distances, and maybe discuss a program to make this more of a year-round, a year-round thing.
Do we have a second to that?
I'll second that.
Yeah, just to see. I mean, we should start working on that and see if we can improve it.
We have a request from council. Thank you. What's next, Mr. Clerk?
Sir Mayor and council, that D is a proclamation designating October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Thank you, and I have Linda Burns as the recipient of a proclamation from the city, but I understand Linda's not here, but Eileen McGrown's here and her fellow commissioners are as well.
Once again, good afternoon. Mayor Sinanian and council members and our city manager, thank you for recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Here, I would like to welcome and introduce my fellow commissioners, Armin Aparian and also Susan Brusalian, who is the, one of our newest members on the commission. It is through awareness, recognition, and discussion that more men, women, and children are able to step forward and end domestic violence. Glendale has great community involvement, and it is through the coordination of the city council, Glendale Police Department, the YWCA, and the Commission on the Status of Women and other partners in the city of Glendale that we're able to serve its residents when it encounters such violence. As such, the commission has partnered with Glendale YWCA to present a community forum on domestic violence next Thursday evening, October 11, at the Central Library. The event will be featuring, so we have a presentation and on community-wide survey, and the YWCA will be presenting. and the YWCA will be presenting the survey that they have conducted. Also, we're going to follow, following that would be a panel discussion on the subject and it's moderated by our Assembly member, Laura Friedman. The panel will be composed of different community members, including Glendale's Police Department, the YWCA, and also I'll be on the panel representing Glendale Unified School District. The event will conclude with a candlelight vigil, and we're going to honor the memories of all of those who've lost their lives through domestic violence. It would be our honor to have Mayor Sinanian and the council members to attend this event next week. We look forward to your continued and open discussion with our partners in the City of Glendale, as I indicated, with our YWCA and the Police Department and other members in the community, and raise awareness about domestic violence. Together, we can break the silence and the cycle and end domestic violence. And I appreciate you wearing your pins tonight, we appreciate you.
Thank you. So the event is on Thursday, October 11th, 6:00 p.m.
Correct.
At the Central Library.
Correct.
Very well, thank you. Well, it's a very important event. In the past, it's been held at YWCA and I believe all, if not, if not most, possibly all of us have participated in these events in the past, the candlelight vigils. So, I'm glad that you're continuing the tradition, and this year it's different, it's a forum, so it's getting escalated.
We just wanted to do a different forum and invite key factors and members of the society and the city that are helping and assisting domestic violence, people who have, so therefore it's going to be very exciting. It's new, so we really want your presence there, and also, we're going to have a candlelight vigil as usual to honor those.
Okay, very well, yeah, of course.
I just want to commend the commission for continuing your work to raise awareness for domestic violence. I know it's a very important subject. I think this year it's going to be even more educational, which I think is a very good thing. So, congratulations and good luck. Regrettably, I won't be able to be there, but, well, I'll be there in spirit, so I hope you have a good crowd and I wish you great success on that evening. Thank you.
And if your fellow commissioners, Armin or Susan, you want to add something, now's your opportunity.
No, I think she said it all for us.
Yes, she did, okay, very well. Then I have a proclamation for you, which states, whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects over 10 million Americans of all races, ages, gender, and income levels each year. And whereas one in three women will experience domestic violence in her lifetime end, whereas children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average. And boys who witness domestic violence are twice as likely to abuse their own partners and children when they become adults. Whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police, and court fees, shelters, foster care, sick leave, and inflicts untold emotional trauma to the entire family. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assistance to victims. Now, therefore I, Zara Sinanian, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim the month of October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge citizens of Glendale to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community. And I am going to present this combination to you personally. I think we can move on to the next item.
Mayor and council, next is consent items, including, as following our routine, may be acted upon by one motioning member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration, may do so by making such requests for motions proposed. We have one card submitted to pull five D off the consent calendar. Four, I'm sorry, four D.
Four D. Very well, will someone move the balance of the calendar?
Someone move.
Second.
May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian? Yes. Please read item 14 to the record.
14 is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power and Director of Community Development regarding Battery Storage Program and Net Energy Metering. D1 is Resolution Making Findings under California Assembly Bill 546 regarding the Permit Application Process for Advanced Energy Storage Systems. Two is Resolution Amending and Suspending City of Glendale Resolution Number 15-74 pertaining to NEM in order to allow a one-time election of payment or credit for excess energy.
Mr. Zern? Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have two items here that are, and the first one having to do with the streamlining of the permit process for battery storage facilities was based on state law that was passed last year, requires agencies to offer a streamlined process. You maybe remember, a couple of years ago, a similar bill was passed for solar systems, to which we then put that into our process. We're all permit forms, information forms, any requests of GWP, any requirements of GWP all be online, so it makes it a lot easier process for the applicant. The second part of that has to do with streamlining the actual permitting process for submitting and getting your permit approved online, which is something the city is working on. And we're probably, on the outside, probably about a year away, maybe less, in getting that done. And once that's done, we'll have that incorporated with both the solar and the battery storage. The second is our net energy metering program whereby anybody who's eligible, excuse me, and is in that program has, or must each year make a declaration of whether they want a credit for any net energy that they've generated that goes back into the system, in other words, gets sold back to us. And it's very little, and there's about 300 customers who do that. They get an opportunity to choose, but they must choose each year whether they get a credit or whether they get a lump sum cash value on their bill. So, it's kind of a time-consuming effort. We asked the customers, would they like to do it another way, as a single, one-time election of which way to go? And then we would keep it that way until they told us differently. And that was agreeable to everyone. So that's what we're recommending we switch to, is next year or this year, we will ask each of the customers which way they want to go. They'll make that election and they will stay on that course until they tell us differently, and we'll eliminate each year having to go through the process again and again, and the results usually being the same. So this is based on customer feedback and trying to make the process a little bit more amenable to them.
Very well, any questions from the council? We have a card from, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to get a clarification. If they change their mind after, let's say, two years, they can call and, or email and say that they want to change.
Absolutely. They can do it mid-year if they'd like, and we'll work with them on that. So, yes, we weren't locking anybody into it, just saying, instead of each year, because folks are going, "I just want to do the same thing, why do I have to do this all over again?" And if you forget to do it, there could be an issue with how you get your credit, so we made it easier for them.
Very well, we have a card from Dan Brotmann. Dan, how much time do you need? How much time will you need?
Two minutes, three minutes? Okay. Good evening, Mayor Sinanian and council members, staff. I have no issues with GWP's current proposals, and in fact, I'm pleased that they intend to extend net metering and streamline the process. But given that the issue of battery storage has come up, I did want to remind council and the public that we're still waiting for GWP to begin permitting the Tesla Powerwall 2s and other similar battery systems. Mayor Sinanian, you remember, I'm sure that you raised this many, many months ago, but we are still waiting for the first permit to be issued. I know for a fact that LADWP and Pasadena Water and Power are allowing these systems. I may be wrong on this, but to my knowledge, only Glendale and Burbank among nearby utilities are still not there. I understand the safety of our linemen is paramount, but I'm wondering how others have found a way to get there, to get comfortable with these systems and not us. So I hope GWP will see its way to making this happen in very short order. I just add one other thing in case you don't know. Governor Brown just signed a bill called SB 700, which extends the residential, the state rebates, I'm sorry, for residential energy storage by five years, under a program called the Self-Generation Incentive Program, or S-Chip. The state now has something like a billion dollars allocated to these rebates. This is a huge statement by the California Legislature. They are signaling that distributed, or so-called behind-the-meter storage is a critical component to all these residential solar systems that have been installed. Solar, as you know, without storage has limited value because it's intermittent. But together, they stabilize the grid and they can add to reliability. They reduce the single-point-of-failure risk that we have right now at Grayson and the single substation. So I urge GWP to really get behind these efforts in a big way, not resist because of any potential loss of revenue. And I also hope that they will push faster to implement time-of-use pricing, which will encourage storing, storage, I'm sorry, during the hours when energy is least polluting, which is the day when we're able to generate from the sun, and use that power when energy is most polluting, which are in the evenings, especially on hot days when GWP would otherwise be forced to ramp up local gas generation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brotmann. Mr. Zern, on the issue of the Tesla batteries?
Yes, sir. And I think we've tried to keep you updated on that, because you did ask us, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. What we had is no policy internally. We have not dragged our feet or resisted. Those terms bother me a little bit. We've never resisted. We didn't have in place the process, the permitting, the inspection, and most importantly, the safety. And as I think I had mentioned to you once before, I'm not going to jeopardize the safety of my men for anything. That's just it. So, with that said, the internal policy is complete. I have signed off on it, Ms. Beers, I believe, has signed off on it, and it's in effect, and we've notified those that were in the queue for battery storage that were ready to go, so they'll be coming in and we will be moving forward with that.
So, to sum it up, they can have the Tesla batteries?
They can have, well, they can have any battery, the battery they like. Tesla isn't, you know, possibly the only one, I'm not going to promote Tesla, but if they have a battery storage, or any kind of a storage, because as you see in the item I presented to you, it just said "storage," because there may be other methods of storage, then come on, we're ready to go. We've got the logistics worked out, a lot of that working with both Pasadena and the City of LA and learning from their mistakes, but we've been able to get that done. As far as time of use, the speaker mentioned time of use. As you recall, in our rates, we improved our time of use, so over a three-year period, we're getting it down to the minimum use period, so that our peaks are, or our off-peaks are a greater span of time, and that includes holidays and weekends. And the next step, as I think I mentioned to you, was to take a comprehensive look at the potential. I think it'll be probably sooner than later that we have a straight-up time-of-use rate schedule that we use. So that's being looked at right now.
Okay.
If there's any other questions?
Yes, there are questions.
I know you don't want to promote Tesla, but Tesla was mentioned. Do you have to have a Tesla solar system in order to use their battery storage, or you can?
That's my understanding, yes. The two go hand in hand. The speaker was right, solar has been enhanced tremendously by combining it with battery storage, and that's not on a household, just on a household level, that's all the way up to grid-scale, commercial level. So, the two in combination have made solar a much better option from the standpoint of its ability to produce power beyond just when the sun shines.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Zern, any other comments? If there are no comments, I'll move the item.
Second.
Okay, we have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes, thank you. Next item, please.
I have five of the city council and staff comments.
Okay, I have something I want to queue up first. We have a video on today's Artsakh Street opening. We can show that video? Today, we're gathered on a truly historic and momentous occasion, the official unveiling of Artsakh Street. As many of you realize, this is more than just a naming or renaming of a street. By taking this step for the first time in its history, Glendale is truly recognizing and commemorating the decades-long contribution of the large Armenian-American community to this city. The history of the Armenian-American community in Glendale is very long and goes back to the turn of the 20th century. Thank you all for being here, thank you for your support on this important event. We look forward to seeing you and your families very frequently on Artsakh Street. Okay, thank you. So, as the video indicates, for those who were not there today in the morning, at 9:00 a.m. we had the official opening of Artsakh Street, which is a two-block stretch of Maryland Avenue, and, well, it was excerpts from the speech that I made, and all my colleagues had the opportunity to make their speeches. And it was a memorable day, because as I stated in my speech, this is the first time there's any place name in the City of Glendale, an official place name, that is associated with the Armenian community, their culture, their heritage, and is a great way to commemorate and really acknowledge the contributions that have been made over the last 40 years to the City of Glendale. I mentioned something in that video that, not sure how far back the Armenian presence in the City of Glendale goes back, but, for example, Paul Ignatius, who was Navy Secretary from 1967 to 1969, was born in Glendale in 1920. So clearly, immediately following the genocide, there was some influx of Armenian refugees who found a safe haven in the City of Glendale. And to this day, many Armenians come here and become Armenian-Americans and create their futures in this wonderful country, for which all of us are eternally grateful. I have some other items that I'll briefly mention. Governor Brown, last week, signed into law SB 25, which was a bill that was introduced by our own Senator Anthony Portantino, and perhaps I can ask our city clerk to say a few words about the significance of this bill. I think it's a wonderful, wonderful bill that really alleviates the pressure that's put upon us by the fact that we have to consolidate our local elections with statewide and national elections, and the county's going to be conducting them. At least, as a result of SB 25, our local candidates will have priority. So I'll have our clerk explain it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Didn't have any prepared comments, so I'll try to be thorough yet succinct. As you mentioned, when a state law, SB 415, required all local jurisdictions that had a voter turnout below a certain percentage to consolidate their elections with the statewide elections date, this council, like many councils, voted and then voters approved to have the charter conform to state law. The move to have elections held, in our case, on March or during statewide primaries, others decide to consolidate to November election dates. But the impact of it was driving local races to the bottom of what was already a voluminous and pretty, a ballot filled with different offices, as well as propositions, that can be quite lengthy. Studies had shown that voter interest in the bottom of the ticket starts to wane, oftentimes on local measures, as there's one being proposed in this November upcoming election, which will inevitably, as people will see, be at the end of the ballot, so be sure to turn all the way to the end of the ballot to make your decision on Measure S. And when we saw this, we approached our state senator, I approached Senator Portantino, who's always willing to lend a ear to individuals in local government, people in the community, and hear out good ideas, and we suggested to him that the ballot order should be flipped, that those individuals during these large election cycles that are of the least means to be able to get their names out there during a heavy campaign season, at least have the opportunity to be first on the ballot order. Because we know that most people will inevitably vote for governor, they will vote for president, they will vote for those large offices that have the means to raise the funds and get the exposure that they need. But oftentimes, local races are your average citizen's first foray into elected office. So we worked on it. so we worked on a bill. Um, we crafted it, we introduced it, um, we put our efforts behind it, but we didn't expect it to have quite the success that it had, and like a snowball kind of rolling downhill, it just kept picking up momentum. We had the League of California Cities Los Angeles chapter support it, the, uh, City of Los Angeles, uh, supported it. Quite honestly, there wasn't a local jurisdiction, especially in Los Angeles County, the county most, uh, heavily impacted by this, uh, SB 415 consolidation, that didn't support it. Along the way, we did have some challenges, some opposition, some individuals, um, in government and elsewhere that, uh, didn't necessarily see the merit of it, um, people who were reticent to change, but ultimately, we succeeded. It passed committee. I had the opportunity to go up to Sacramento and testify on this bill. Um, it passed through the Assembly Committee, passed the Assembly, passed the Senate, and finally made it to the governor's desk, and we did receive word that Los Angeles County will be the test pilot project for this, to see if, um, there is a correlation with ballot order and voter interest and turnout. So they will, um, start, um, I believe, um, I want to say 2020, but I'm not 100% certain. We'll have to see that that was one of the agreements that we had. Los Angeles County is rolling out new voting machines. Um, they're very concerned with making sure that those are successful, that voters know when to vote, where to vote, how to vote. Um, I think once they have gone their so-to-speak sea legs and, um, that process is underway, then the next, uh, task will be to, um, introduce a new ballot order for elected offices. So I thank you for that.
So if I could ask a question, will city council be first, or those of lesser means, like college board?
The law is written, so city clerks are actually first on the ballot. No, I'm, I'm just kidding, I'm teasing. It is, and it will actually be city council, school boards, college boards, other local offices, um, along with that, followed by local, um, measures. Um, following that, it'll be special districts. Um, I believe here is the only one we have really.
Presidential or federal or?
No, then it will be state offices, and it'll actually be the federal offices will be the absolute last.
Well, that's, that's amazing. That's wonderful.
If, if you can think of low, uh, government as layers, uh, going from the local to the county, to the state and up to the federal, that is the order that it will follow.
Right. And folks usually come out to vote for federal issues, as, um, kind of counterintuitive as it is, they do. They're excited about voting for a president, you know, 3,000 miles away, who's trickled down, uh, policies, will, at some point, make it down to us, whereas local authorities and, and local elections, uh, are not as glamorous, I guess, for, uh, voters, and they don't, they're not as excited about voting for us. Well, I think this is a wonderful result and, and shows wonderful cooperation between our city clerk, our state senator, and we're going to have a statewide impact as a result of it, and we're, we're, now, that's substantively affecting voter turnout for our local elections, and I think that's wonderful. So, thank you, Mr. Clerk, and thank you, Senator Portantino, for all that you do. Okay, last Tuesday, we had a, instead of the regular city council meeting, we had a joint meeting with Glendale Unified School Boards, uh, Glendale Unified, the School District's Board of Directors, and I thought it was a wonderful meeting, uh, very substantive. I think some good things are going to come of it. Uh, every board member and every council member was in attendance, and we, the meeting went quite long, because we engaged in, uh, very proactive, uh, talks about all those things that, uh, if, that impact us and our city, and I hope that we'll have these meetings more frequently. Uh, so just to follow up on that, on Thursday, I attended the Glendale Unified School District's PTA Council's annual luncheon, which was another wonderful opportunity to meet with Glendale residents who happened to be parents in the schools in the city of Glendale, much like myself, and, um, talk about our schools and our children, and how we can work together to, uh, and, and most believe, most importantly, thank the administrators and the teachers and PTA parents who are so significant and so important, um, in the, uh, quality of education to our schools. And finally, on Saturday, I attended the Armenian Relief Society's annual Armenian, I think 13th Annual Armenian Festival, and my colleagues, I believe all of them were there, and it was a great festival, uh, you, except for Councilmember Arganian, and, uh, good festival with a lot of cultural performances. Um, that's all I have. Another move, I promise to go to, to Councilmember Arganian.
Two weeks ago, I offered to have rent control in Glendale, and I'm glad that, uh, Councilmember Garpetian seconded, and Mayor Sinanian spoke in favor of it. As I mentioned, I do not like what is, has been some offering, 3%, but I, because I have seen the result of having 3%. If the rent will be increased 3%, nobody will be willing to come forward to, uh, provide rental units, because it's not worth it. I looked at the average rent increase in Glendale, although some landlords are very unfair, one being a unit, which I don't want to give the address, which raised the rent from 1425 to 2600. I mean, it was unbelievable, and including those increases, we see the average is a little bit over 5%. So that's why I offered rent to be limited to, increase to be limited to 5%, which is reasonable, in my opinion. There is an issue regarding rent control in coming November 6th election. There is an issue, uh, about this, which calls for proposition of, or Measure 10. It says expand local government's authority to enact, enact rent control on residential property. So, I think by the time we get ready for this will be after November, in my opinion. Uh, so, I want to emphasize to all those who came here, that it appears that this council is thinking about rents and the increases with some landlords, uh, being very unreasonable, raising the rent too much, and I hope this will alleviate some of the problems that longtime residents of Glendale are having. They are leaving this town, and they have relatives, kids in this town, and they leave with broken heart. So that's why I think rent control, for now, will be proper in this city, because the situation is dire, and every day I see a few people, they come to my office, not this office, city office, my work office on TV station, and they are talking to me about this, and I basically cry with them, because they lived here for 20, 30, maybe longer here. They raise kids. Some of them, they're young families with two kids or more. And, uh, there was one came to me, this was a few months ago, when he had two little kids. I remembered myself, like, I don't know, like about 58 years ago, that we had in this, in, we were in the same situation. So I think we have to help, uh, the public, we have to help those who are having issues, those who are feeling the pressure. Uh, rent control is out of control, actually, and we have to do something. That's why I'm asking also, I raised this issue, but I will elaborate on it in the future. We have to allocate $100 million to build affordable housing beside this issue, because we cannot sit here. I didn't come here to sit here and, you know, say yes on different issues, and people, they see me on TV. I'm on TV every day, seven days a week, so I don't need to be here on TV. So we have to do something, and we have to do something quick. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, Councilmember Devine?
Um, okay, thank you. Um, I attended yesterday, uh, the Business Life Women's Achievers, uh, luncheon, uh, hosted by, um, well, Greg Krikorian and his, uh, committee. Um, his father, John Krikorian, uh, began this, uh, this award, awards luncheon for women. He was definitely ahead of his time, because he recognized women as very important to the business community. Um, it was a great success, and I want to congratulate everyone, uh, who was awarded, uh, as a woman achiever, and also to everyone that worked on the, uh, the project. Um, I also have an announcement to make about a, um, uh, and this might be interesting to, uh, to attend. It's a, a gallery event, uh, displaying selections from, uh, Assemblywoman Laura Friedman had a district-wide photo competition, and, uh, she's going to have, uh, there's going to be an event where the winners, I guess, are, are displayed. It will be Friday, 5:30 to 7:00 PM, at the Adams Square Mini Park. Uh, the program will begin at 7:00 PM, and of course, everyone here is invited, and everyone out there is invited. So, um, I guess they're going to have some very good food there. So, um, it's free, uh, in the park, 5:30 to 7:00, and as I say, program starts at 7:00, so you can see, uh, fabulous photographs, uh, from her Assembly District. And my final, um, comment, uh, and I'd like to, uh, I'll need to get a second, hopefully, from one of my colleagues. Uh, a, uh, my appointee to the Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, Elinas Sotrin, came to me with an idea, uh, to, uh, as far as what happens to our playground equipment, uh, when we, we kind of buy new equipment to replace. And, um, she felt that perhaps we could ship it to, donate it to playgrounds and children in Armenia. So we've been in, you know, going back and forth with Director of Parks, One Bolanikian, uh, to, uh, perhaps look at our gently-used, uh, playground equipment, disassemble it so that it can be reassembled in Armenia, and, uh, send, uh, uh, first one would be from Maple Park, and then possibly from Fremont Park. So what I would like is to ask staff to bring back a report and tell us what the feasibility of doing, uh, such a donation would be, uh, cost, et cetera, and, um, I'd like to see if one of my colleagues has, uh, will second that.
And, and while your colleagues are thinking about it, um, Councilmember Devine, um, Elinas Sotrin also called, um, me to let, give me a heads up that she had spoken with you, and I spoke with One Bolanikian. Um, the feasibility of us taking apart, uh, the equipment, absolutely in place, um, the piece that we would need is basically the transportation piece. And Elinas Sotrin said that she, along with others in the community, would, um, hope to fundraise, um, and secure funding to be able to send the equipment to Armenia. Now, if that's the case, that is pretty simple for us in terms of being able to make the donation. Um, we would bring a report to you based on the fact that we are donating the items, uh, to Armenia. And we've donated items to other countries in the past, like Mexico and Armenia. No report was necessary, um, as long as the funds were there to make the transport, um, and no city funds were utilized for that. So, um, as long as outside external funds are in place, um, it is something that's very feasible for us to, to do, and, um, donate again, um, items that are very gently used and can be utilized elsewhere.
So do I, do we?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Garpetian?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to be brief in the interest of time. Uh, I also attended the ARS's 13th Annual Festival. It was a great festival. My favorite, uh, part of the festival is the food, the food and the, the handmade rugs. I mean, the, the rugs are out of this place. I mean, if you haven't seen it, go take a look at it. Uh, also, the, the, uh, the grand opening of Artsakh Street this morning was a very good success for this city, for this council. Uh, it was, uh, way overdue. Uh, it was a great event. I want to thank everyone involved, uh, especially staff, for putting out this nice stage and, uh, accommodating us this morning. Uh, also attended, uh, Rodrigo Hills Council's 43rd Annual Big Strike Auction, Saturday night. We raised, I don't know, tens of thousands of dollars for the Boy Scouts of America. It was a great success, and, uh, looking forward to next year, and, uh, with the interest of time, Mr. Mayor, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Najarian?
Thank you. Uh, Sunday, I attended the 60th Anniversary Celebration of the Queen of Martyrs, uh, Catholic Armenian Church, although located in downtown. Many of the parishioners are here from Glendale, as well as the 20th Anniversary of Father Arminak Bedrosian, uh, in the clergy. Um, I would like, um, well, let me, let me state this. I, I have heard from residents and through reports in the media that there's a lot of crime occurring in our new apartment buildings, up and down Central. Property crimes and, uh, crimes of assault, and I don't know the extent of that, whether that's true or not, but if we could have a report from the police department, uh, as to, uh, what's going on in those units, and, uh, perhaps throughout the city in a more general sense, I would appreciate that. Can I get an amen?
Sick.
Thank you.
And every once in a while, we, we bring updates to the council in terms of, uh, crime in the city. We'll have the chief, uh, bring a very short presentation during presentations, um, soon, and provide that information.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And that's all the comments from council. Next item, please.
Next item is community event announcements, as well as three-minute general public comments. Okay, we have no event announcements, but we have five speaking cards, and we'll start with Mike Moehl, followed by Tony Passarella.
Good evening, Mayor Sinanian.
Good evening, sir.
Before I start my speech, I'd like to address the city, uh, clerk in regards to the November ballot. Everybody's getting the, uh, right now, the sample, not the sample, but the, the ballot, sample ballot for November. But I know I'm getting phone calls, where's Measure S? Is that a separate item? I don't have an answer for that one. Is it part of that? I didn't see it. No one else saw it.
I'll have to double-check and see what you're referring to, Mr. Moehl. If you have a ballot book that you're referring to, please.
I have it at home.
Can you bring it to the clerk's office, so we can clear it up?
Yeah, we're happy to meet with you tomorrow or any day.
Sure, sure. No big deal. No problem, no problem. Okay. Okay, thank you. Uh, my name is Mike Moehl. Artie, can you start my clock again in three minutes, please?
Start it again, please, Artie.
Thank you. I've got to keep my time here, you know? A good evening, Mayor Sinanian, councilmembers. My name is Mike Moehl. City Mayor Yasmin Beers. Last time I came before this council, I stated the average pension for a firefighter who retired over the last five years was $150,000 a year for life, and you immediately came back and stated my figures were wrong. You said to me, our city council, council members and the viewing audience, that $61,000 was the truer number. Mrs. Beers, $61,000 a year is correct. If you were averaging over the last 40 to 50 years, but my statement is correct, you are misleading, like your predecessor, that, the numbers and the public. According to Transparent California in 2017, the average Glendale retirement pension and benefit for a full-career retiree was $81,540 annually. The average social security recipient annually receives is $16,320. That's five times greater than the average social security recipient. And if your name was Bill Gates, the most you could receive is $32,244, while it's great to be a city employee. Total Glendale pension and benefit for, for current retired city employee is $450 million, $137,000. Mrs. Beers, that's about one-half-billion dollars and still growing. Glendale taxpayers are on the hook for 9,509 retired city employees. It's not surprising that Glendale police, Glendale firefighters, and Glendale city management have each contributed $50,000 to convince voters that Measure S, the so-called Quality of Life and Essential Services Protection Measure, is good for them. Mrs. Beers, you need to stop misleading the, misleading and lying to the council and the public. You, you are no different than your predecessor, Mr. Scott Ochoa. Having a salary and benefit over $300,000 annually, neither you nor your coworkers are public servants, but public gougers. public servants, but public gougers. Measure S should really be called Save My Government Pension and Please Increase My Salary This Year Also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill.
Mr. Mayor and council, while Mr. Mohill was speaking, I logged into the online County Registrar's website and on the sample ballot, when I put in at least my address, because I didn't want to put in anyone else's, arguments for and impartial analysis for Measure S are both in there. So, Mr. Mohill, if you know of anyone, or if your sample ballot doesn't happen to have it, please contact our office and we'll look into it. But as of now, the county's sample ballot does include it.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Tony Passarella, followed by Haik Mahmouyan.
Evening, Mayor Sinanya, councilmember staff. Tony Passarella, 31-year resident of the city of Glendale. I think this is my fourth or fifth time, I don't remember, on the same subject. It's that stretch of roadway between the 134 in the north and let's take it down to Colorado on the south, on Pacific I'm talking about. The last communication I had, Eliza Papazian, stated that City Manager Beers ordered a feasibility study, so I'm in hopes that I'll get some comment back from her as I'm done speaking. I'm not totally prepared. I was at the school board meeting, so I don't have my notes. But I did get from, I did a public request and got actually more information than I asked for, and I was very curious that in some of the information I got was a receivership of, I think it was six or eight radar feedback signs. So I thought, well, I think that was like June something or other. So I'm thinking, and maybe you can address this after I'm done speaking, please, whether those are the portable ones or whether those ones that you can put on the poles or erect. So they're sitting somewhere, whether they're, I don't think they've been erected, you know, on a pole or wherever. So I'm very curious about that. It's really a dangerous stretch of highway. I mean, you know, nothing's been done in the 31 years that I've lived in Glendale. There's one speed sign which is going north at about, I think it's at Colorado. There's no speed signs going south. The people, if they catch the red, the green light, they're just, you know, just going fast. Tickets are being, you know, given left and right according to a motor, motorbike cop that I talked to. So I just want an update. I just don't, don't understand, you know, am I just naive and, am I just so naive that, that I'm thinking in hopes that maybe something could be done where in fact, nothing has been done? And now this is my fourth or fifth time here. So I'm really puzzled by the whole thing. So I don't know, I have other things, but I don't have my notes in front of me. So hopefully, City Manager Beers can, can answer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Passarella.
Are you saying that there's not enough enforcement or there's not enough speed limit signs?
Yeah. The enforcement's there, definitely the enforcement's there, but there's no, there's no changes being made. I mean, I'm in that area like every day. I gas up at the Shell gas station there. You can't turn Myrtle, Alexander, Salem, Milford, you can't turn on that street without, you know, it's very problematic. You've got to like peek out the window of your car. I mean, you know, so I don't know. So I'll be back next month if nothing's been done, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Passarella. Are we doing a survey?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, based on the fact that Mr. Passarella had come to the city council and we have provided information back to Mr. Passarella regarding the stretch on Pacific, south of the 134 freeway, I have asked staff to look into the area and look to see if there are some mitigating factors and are there areas in which we can improve in terms of signage? Because I know the enforcement piece is there, but are there things that we can do in terms of signage, et cetera? And staff is looking into that. I do know that we, I believe the signs that you're referring to, Mr. Passarella, the speed signs and the radar signs, there are a number of them that are on order, but they're for citywide purposes. And I do know a couple of them are slated for the Pacific area. I don't know exactly where they would be placed. That's information that we can provide to you at a later date. As I sit here, sir, I don't, I don't have that information with me. But staff is looking into that stretch and through engineering, traffic engineering, will be looking to see if there are some things that we can do in that area.
Thank you. Keep us posted as information becomes available. Haik Mahmouyan, followed by Sarah Tenorio. Haik.
Good evening. Lida M., Luis Pogotsz, Luis Caie, Yerkuharur Dolar Vartsi Bartzatsun Mitarum, Dosientos Dolaras Aumento de Renta en Un Anio. Jose M., Luis Pogotsz, Haur Dolar, Cien Dolaras. Tigranke, Maypol, Yerkuharur Hitsun Dosientos Cinquenta. Uzanna A, Windsor, Ut Harur Ocho Centos. Artun, right here, Orange Grove, Two Hundred Yerkuharur Dosientos. Vasgen Kenwood, Yerek Haur Hitsun Dolar Bartzatsun, Toshakaru Section Eight. Ila Vartsi Massa Ut Haur Karasun Dolar, Yefor Ila Toshaka Inna Harur Das Dolar. Astrik A, Kenwood, Yerkuharur Dosientos. These are only a few names from a short walk in Glendale. The list goes on and on. People are paying 50, 60, 70, 90 percent of their income on rent. The rents go up for thousands of tenants in Glendale every month. And this extraordinary crisis calls for extraordinary measures. Especially now that rent control is being discussed, the greedy landlords are lining up to raise their rents even more. We demand that you pass an immediate rent cap of 4 percent annually with November 5, 2017 base rent. Immediate. This demand has been standing from August 28 of 2018. And it's the one thing that you can do to show that what you said about looking into rent control are not just simply empty words. It's the least you can do. We commend you for supporting and for promising to look at rent control. And if you meet at least the minimums that we demand, we will stand by you as a political force. We are not going anywhere and we will grow. We will only grow. We know that the California Apartment Association, the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles and their greedy supporters are starting to chatter. I read their letters and their policy positions are anti-common sense, anti-renter, anti-immigrant, racist, anti-working class, anti-community, and anti-Glendale. I remind you again, your choice is between the livelihoods of 60 percent of your constituents on one hand and on the other inconveniencing greedy landlords. Note, not all the landlords, just the greedy ones who are less than 1 percent. Mi komits dukune Glendely Benakichniri Vatsun Tokosi Baratsuren Goyate Veluhun Aravurutsuna. Mi us komits aga Vartsut Anteriri Businessin Mikich Kapela. Su eleksyon es entre el sustento de sesenta por ciento de sus constituyentes y incomodar a los dueños golosos que son una fracción del un por ciento. Nothing on your agenda is as important as adopting rent control now. Thank you. Duhov.
Thank you, Haik. Thank you, thank you, everyone. Sarah Tenorio, thank you. Okay, quiet, please. We have to continue the meeting. We have to continue the meeting. Haik. Sarah, you have three minutes.
Your city council, you're stalling again. We're waiting for some action. We see your support. Time to take action. As we mentioned, we want a 4 percent cap for tenants. We're also looking to protect all tenants, tenants that are on a month-to-month base. A lot of tenants are coming to us. They're telling us that our building has increased our rent by 100 this month, that later build on into another rent increase demand of 700. And how can people pay? And these are tenants from the extension state and here by the Pacific. And they're saying that their rent and their, their rent has increased from 1,150 to now 1,950 within this year. How is that possible? Like, how does that make any sense if you're here about helping the community, yet you're displacing the community by not taking direct action right now? We have Glendale Tenants Union here with the resources. Where is our one-to-one, where is your one-to-one with the community about this issue about rent control and how it can be implemented now? Because we need this now. Tenants are hurting now. Families are hurting now. This community is hurting now. We need action now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we'll give a few minutes. I'm ready to vote now, but the item has to be brought back on the agenda. When is this coming back?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, just to get on record in terms of the fact that it does take time for the staff to put a report together such as this, to provide options to the city council to make a decision on, on a very important item that was brought forward a couple of weeks ago. This item is slated tentatively to come back to the city council on November 13.
November 13.
Just a report for the council to then be able to look at the item and provide any sort of direction, any sort of...
Will the, the report exclude the, the possibility to take action?
That evening?
Yeah, that evening? Okay, thank you.
That evening, you can give us direction in terms of what your actionable items may be. We may need to bring pieces back depending on what you ultimately require us to do and the number of council members who may want to move forward in, in a particular area or not. And so options will be presented that evening first and foremost to educate all of you, all of the community, all of our residents, and for you to be able to make an informed decision in terms of how you may want to move forward and provide that direction to us.
Camille Levy is my last speaker. Hello?
Good evening, Mayor, city council, staff. I am Camille Levy and I'm here on, in my role as the Vice President of the Board of Wellness Works. And come on up, Lisa. Lisa is our Executive Director. Several weeks ago, we had a very successful event at Verdugo Park, not on our watch. And I am here to say that on behalf of the 4,800 veterans who actually reside in Glendale, we are grateful for the support of all of the city departments who helped us through this first year of learning and sometimes mistakes. We, our requests were met, sometimes before we even knew we had a request. But a very special thank you to Library, Arts, Parks and Culture, Public Works, Glendale PD, Glendale Fire Department, the Permits Department, and of course, all of you. I would just like to read what one of our veterans who participated wrote back and said to us. "All U.S. military veterans have stood the watch, always on guard, defending our country against any threat during their time in service. This watch is manned 24 hours a day without end and is never relinquished until properly relieved by another. This is an ever-standing general order. Today, we are here to say thank you for your service. Your post stands relieved. We at Wellness Works have the watch." So thank you on behalf of all of them. Lisa?
Mr. Mayor, city council members, city manager, and city leaders, I want to extend our gratitude on behalf of our staff and the clients that we serve. A wholehearted thank you. It is very meaningful to them to witness all of you taking part in coming to the event, whether it's the opening or the closing and speaking and being present and being a witness to the watch. 22 veterans every day, that's what's reported, choose to take their lives, and this is an epidemic that we believe we are leading the way in addressing. We provide alternative healing modalities and support for our veterans so that they would not consider or be, consider a different path. The watch continues and there's an opportunity to continue that work with joining the watch. But I just want to tell you that I believe that there's significant research now that indicates that while post-traumatic stress is real, post-deployment alienation is also a huge consideration. And it is the community coming together, civilians and military, that can make the difference and truly can save lives. So I thank you on behalf of those that we serve and we are so excited to tell you that because of your support and because of your participation and at what level you participated, September 13 through the 15th will be the next "Not On Our Watch" in Glendale at Verdugo Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
If I may, it was a, it was a very, very wonderful event and it was good to see the vets that were there bonding, speaking with each other, really feeling a togetherness. And I, I know that those of us that were there really appreciate the work that you do and hearing from the vets about the work that you do and praising Wellness Works. So thank you. Thank you all.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just want to thank you for bringing the event to Glendale this year and hosting it here next year as well because you're very proud of your organization as a Glendale base and we, we thank you for what you do. As you mentioned, 22 veterans a day, it's, it's just mind-boggling. It's just unacceptable. And it was an honor for me to be there this year as well. This is the fourth year. And hopefully, we can, we can find a solution to this huge issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next item, please, Mr. Clerk.
Under adoption of ordinance, this 7A is an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the contract between city council of the city of Glendale and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System. This was introduced on September 11, 2018 by Councilmember Arna Najarian.
Second.
There is a, there is a speaker's card. Mr. Mohill? He'll be right back. He'll be right back. Just for the public to know that we have TV monitors in the back and they can hear everyone. I think he just received a phone call.
Yeah. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. Before you is another adoption amendment in regard to staying with the corrupt and irresponsible, deceitful California Public Employees Retirement System, better known as CALPERS. Why isn't this council taking action to leave CALPERS and putting future city employees on social security and a defined benefit plan, just like folks who have to pay the bills? Measure S, the so-called Glendale Quality of Life and Essential Services Protection Measure, is tied into CALPERS and the need to raise another $30 million in new sales taxes. Councilman Najarian. According to Transparent California in 2017, Glendale city taxpayers are on the hook for 9,509 retired city employees. The average retirement pension benefit amount for a full-career retiree is a whopping $81,540 a year. On the other hand, the average social security recipient in 2017 was only a paltry $16,320 a year. Glendale city employees on average earn about five times more than the average individual on social security. A political action committee has been formed to support Yes on Measure S. Glendale Police, Fire, and City Management Association have each contributed $50,000 to convince voters to vote Yes on Measure S. Joe Allen, a Glendale police officer who is on the Glendale Police Officer Association Board, and City Treasurer Rafi Menukian are both on the Yes on Measure S Committee and will be receiving a CALPERS government pension with benefits upon retirement. Councilmembers, do you not, do you not think there is a conflict of interest when city employees create a political action committee and the, and the Glendale Police Association is making their good offices at 512 East Wilson Avenue, Suite 309, available to help promote Measure S? Save My Government Pension. Save my government pension and I want another government pay increase. Glendale Police Officers Association, GPOA, current contract with the city will be expiring next year and GPOA will be negotiating with the city management for a new contract by GPOA helping the city to promote Measure S. They would be expecting, let me undermine that word, expecting, to be awarded with a healthy new contract in 2019 and the years ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Did I hear someone say there was a motion?
There was a...
There was a motion. Motion and a second. Well, if there are no questions and comments, we'll take roll call.
Councilmembers, Agarjayan?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpadian?
Yes.
N'Gari?
Yes.
Harris and Anian?
Yes.
Next item, please. Under action items, 8A is City Attorney and Director of Community Development regarding policy direction for allowance, regulation, and/or prohibition of short-term rentals. One is a motion initiating amendments to Glendale Municipal Code Regarding Short-Term Regulations. Two is a motion providing staff direction regarding Glendale Municipal Code Amendments to allow, regulate, and/or ban short-term rentals.
We're going to go to Mike Garcia, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Garcia?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, members of council. In December of 2016, the council received a report on short-term rentals, vacation rentals, and at that time directed us to continue to monitor the legal landscape as it applied to those as there was various pieces of litigation making their way through the courts. Some of those cases resolved or they've, and some cities have adopted additional regulations. So, we've been asked to bring a subsequent report to address those issues, kind of give you a lay of the land in terms of where, where regulations are at various cities in Southern California, as well as where the litigation is, and possibly receive council feedback and direction on any code amendments that the council may want to make as it pertains to vacation rentals. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Yvette Nukian, who has prepared the report on this item and is prepared to do so tonight.
Ms. Nukian.
Good evening, Mayor Sananian and members of the City Council. As Mr. Garcia explained, we have brought this back since 2016. More of the lawsuits have resolved, but on the flip side, we've had more complaints regarding short-term rentals than ever. Just a quick recap, short-term rentals are dwelling units that are rented to a tenant for a period of less than 30 days. There are two basic types. One is a vacation rental where the host is not present when the guest is occupying. And the second kind, the second broad category is called home sharing, which is when the host is present during the guest's stay. The economic structure of websites that promote this kind of activity, there's two basic structures, the broker model, which charges a per-booking fee, that's the Airbnb model, and the membership fee, which is an annual subscription fee. And then, they also have a variety of other fees that they charge. So, since 2016, nothing has changed with respect to state regulation. The state still hasn't regulated this area. So, it is up to each individual city to do so. Our current zoning code does not specifically regulate short-term rental activities. It is not expressly defined, allowed, or prohibited. And we are just concerned that if it's left vague and ambiguous, there'll be some problems with enforcing it. On the other, and also, there are no specific regulations regarding noise and parking and all those other things that come with this activity. Short-term rentals are not brand-new. They have been operating in Glendale for years. The activity has increased in popularity over the last 10 years, however. Last count, we had 400 active listings. There are probably more at this point. And as I mentioned before, complaints about the negative impacts have increased and they're primarily centered around noise, parking, and the safety concerns. A brief recap of the lawsuits that have resolved since 2016 or partly resolved, as you'll see, the Santa Monica lawsuit is on appeal to the Ninth Circuit. San Francisco settled its lawsuit with Airbnb. If you recall, Airbnb sued the City and County of San Francisco over a law that placed a lot of responsibility and liability upon Airbnb for illegal bookings. It was on First Amendment grounds and as well as something called the Communications Decency Act. So, they settled their lawsuit. Santa Monica, almost the identical lawsuit was brought against the City of Santa Monica that had banned vacation rentals but not home sharing. Santa Monica actually prevailed in that lawsuit to final judgment, but it's on appeal to the Ninth Circuit. And Anaheim's lawsuit was slightly different. It was, they were sued by short-term rental owners who did not like that Anaheim banned the activity altogether in that city. And they settled their lawsuit. Since 2016, on the legislative front, the City of Los Angeles is very close to enacting short-term rental regulations. Just a couple highlights of the proposed Los Angeles ordinance are that a short-term rental must be the primary residence of the host. There is a cap of 120 days with an option to increase this cap if you are a host in good standing, which probably means you haven't had any complaints. It does require hosts to register and it subjects hosting platforms to fines for illegal listings. Pasadena has enacted an ordinance very recently. Some highlights of the Pasadena ordinance are that a short-term rental, similar to the proposed LA ordinance, it has to be the primary residence of the host. Pasadena has no limits on the number of days for hosted stays, which is another way of saying home sharing, and 90-day cap if the host is not present during the stay. So, the only thing for Pasadena that's really important is that it's the primary residence of the host. West Hollywood, interestingly, last time we were here, West Hollywood had, we reported to you, and it was true at the time, they had enacted a total ban on short-term rentals. They have since reversed course and, well, not completely reversed course, but they've allowed home sharing, but limited only to owners of property, not renters. So, you have to either own a condominium or a single-family home. As we mentioned last time in the 2016 report, we'll go over it again, some of the public policy considerations, the positives for, on arguments to allow short-term rentals, efficient use of space, and possibly some studies, although they've been funded largely by Airbnb. Some studies have shown that there's less of a carbon footprint than a hotel if you stay at an Airbnb. Certainly, it provides income for an owner or renter. It does make use of idle property if the owner is not going to be there anyway. And it does somewhat, I believe, help owners pay the mortgage. It is sometimes, I think, overall, more affordable for visitors and oftentimes more comfortable than a hotel. And of course, potential tourist dollars and TOT revenues are another advantage. On the negative side, potential nuisance activities from inconsiderate guests, for example, loud parties, parking impacts. We've heard, as I said, a lot of complaints recently, there's been an uptick of that. Lots of residential character of the neighborhood sort of dovetails on that, but it's slightly different. There is, there have been, there's at least one really high, high-profile study done by the, a nonprofit, and I can get you that reference, that Airbnbs do take rental units off the long-term market and they do have an impact on housing and hence, affordable housing. There is a little bit of difficulty in collecting TOTs, but that can be alleviated if the city chose to negotiate an agreement with the hosting platforms. And there are, of course, enforcement costs involved. More in-depth into the nuisance, we do have a loud party response ordinance that allows the police department to fine repeated calls for service for loud parties and to recover the cost of enforcement. Already went over the general erosion of the residential character of the neighborhood. And then, the sentiment is, in some communities, that commercial activity should not be allowed in residential neighborhoods. The impact on affordable housing, as I mentioned before, is the potential for higher profits creates incentive to take housing off the long-term rental market and operate it as a short-term rental. The reduced supply, of course, puts upward pressure on prices. One policy option here is to ban vacation rentals and allow home sharing for, with respect to affordable units or with respect to non-ownership units. Another possible policy option here is if council wishes, we could, this would require a nexus study to study a possible fee that we would impose on short-term rental operators to potentially offset the impact on affordable housing. At least, one other city has undertaken that. On the issue of transit occupancy tax, we have a definition of hotel under our Transit Occupancy Tax Ordinance that does, we believe, encompass short-term rentals. The hosts are legally obligated to collect and remit the TOTs to the city. The vast majority of the short-term rentals, we believe, have not voluntarily done so. There are a handful that have voluntarily done so. So, under our TOT ordinance, the host is the hotel, quote-unquote, responsible for collecting and the guest is responsible for paying the TOT. It would, if, unless we entered into an agreement with Airbnb where the TOTs were automatically collected upon the booking, we would have to expend considerable resources to track down each short-term rental and actively enforce the TOTs. As I mentioned, some cities have entered into voluntary agreements, Pasadena most recently. And it, you know, such voluntary agreements would save the city administrative costs. And another, here is another policy option, you could direct staff to negotiate with platforms for the collection of TOTs. Banning or regulating short-term rentals would, along with the TOT issue, just generally result in enforcement costs. Gathering the evidence will be time-consuming because the way that these, with these STRs are listed, there is no address given. And so, we would have to do a bit of research to figure that out. And there are some privacy issues. Don't know how much cooperation we would get from Airbnb on that front. Some cities have tried to penalize or criminalize hosting platform conduct in publishing illegal listings. This is what the San Francisco lawsuit was about, although ultimately, we believe such a challenge would not be successful, there is some risk in doing so. The ruling in favor of the City of Santa Monica on this issue is on appeal to the Ninth Circuit. So, in conclusion, regulation options, you can ban short-term rentals completely citywide. You can ban vacation rentals, which is where the host isn't present, and allow home sharing with or without additional regulations or qualifications. You can allow short-term rental activity in some form or another, in different, there's different ways to approach it. You can do it by zone, by the fact that if it's their primary residence or not, based on property type, as West Hollywood has done. And of course, you're not limited by the menu of additional regulations that you can impose. There could be a simple registration, over-the-counter, could be a full-fledged hearing with a CUP. You could put limits on the number of days per year, occupants, the list goes on. There are some potential areas that the City Council may want to direct staff to follow up on. Perhaps you want outreach to stakeholders, further study of particular areas. We would ask for some direction on code amendments potentially to ban or allow and regulate, and TOT enforcement, whether the council thinks we, you know, should go ahead and try to voluntarily negotiate some agreements with the hosting platforms. This is just a checklist. After you get public comment and you're ready to deliberate, we can go back over this. And I've handed a hard copy out to each of you. And that concludes my presentation.
Questions before we go to calls?
I just have one question. The 400 that you mentioned?
Yes.
Are they registered? Is that how you know we have 400? I mean, how do you...
No. We, interesting, in 2016, we had a company approach us wanting to help us with our ordinance. I mean, they were motivated to, you know, have us as a client, but they did give us a rough figure because they have a way of gathering or mining the data from online providers such as Airbnb, VRBO, and HomeAway are the three major players.
Okay. Interesting.
We don't have registration requirements, so we...
Yeah, right, right.
It's just based on the best available data.
So, if you don't mind, can you go back to the San Francisco case?
Yes.
You're, I'm trying to understand, so, these listing companies listed properties that basically are, it's not legal to list those companies' properties, right? Is that what happened?
San Francisco, City and County of San Francisco enacted an ordinance that would make it illegal and would penalize and in some cases criminalize the Airbnbs of the world from listing these homes that weren't registered with the city.
Okay, so, they would have to, they allowed it, but you would have to register them first?
Correct.
And, and they prevailed?
Correct. They ultimately prevailed on the preliminary injunction that Airbnb had brought. The court subsequently ordered them to mediation and they ended up settling the lawsuit. Airbnb ended up cooperating with the City and County of San Francisco with respect to their regulations.
But they are litigating the same issues before the Ninth Circuit on the Santa Monica ordinance.
Okay, so, I was going to ask, next, next, I was going to ask about Santa Monica, same issue, Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal.
Yes, correct.
Except, does Santa Monica ban vacation rentals and allows home sharing only?
Yes, correct.
It's Ninth Circuit Federal Appeal Court based on...
Yes, it was based on federal claims, so it was the Communications Decency Act and First Amendment.
First Amendment.
Yes, correct.
And there's a federal statute which is often interpreted as prohibiting any sort of civil or criminal liability for online platform, any, any sort of online service for publishing any, any type of activity. So, that was, that's their defense. And that's, that's one of the issues that's before the Ninth Circuit.
So, it's a broad federal statute that protects online...
Well, they, Airbnb's of the world, they are saying it's broad and the city's obviously saying it's not so broad.
Okay, and the Anaheim case? What's happening in the Anaheim case?
Yes, so, that one was Anaheim banned short-term rentals entirely citywide and the operators, those that were in existence prior to the ban, sued the city on various legal theories, one of them being CEQA issues. Essentially, what they were arguing with was, we were a legal non-conforming right prior to you banning us and you can't just outlaw it, you have to give us an amortization period, which is the time through which we can recoup our investment. So, City of Anaheim ended up caving to that, well, I don't want to say cave, that sounds terrible. No, they ended up settling with the short-term rental operators and increased the amortization period considerably.
Okay. I think one of our councilmembers wants to leave, so let him make his statements and then we'll move on with the questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, we went to the, sorry? Oh. We participated in Monaco City of Park block party and we had so many issues that was brought up by the residents over there. There was an owner that had four properties on one street and wild parties, no park street parking, and the list goes on and on and on. I think this is a business, we have to treat it as such. So, my, because I have to leave early tonight, I apologize, but my direction would be, or suggestions would be, only primary residents to be able to use it as Airbnb. They have to have the business registration certificate, BRC. The number of days, the 90 days, I think we need to talk about that, see if the 90 days will apply or not. Because 90 days is like almost every weekend, I mean, 40 weekends a year. So, there has to be a clause in their contract that they cannot rent these houses for a party and they have to take a deposit. party, and they have to take a deposit, a fine deposit, from their tenants or whoever is leasing the property. So, the same way that we, we charge residents for false alarms on their alarms for the police department, we can find the property owner if there's a wild party and there's a police call, maybe twice a year, more than twice a year, or what have you. And there has to be a TOT involved. I think they're taking away from our hotels in town, and they need to pay the TOT as everyone else is doing. As far as neighborhood notification requirements, what was that? It's in our report about neighborhood notifications, so they notify the neighbors that this is an Airbnb?
Correct. It could be just one-time annually, whatever the council wishes, or each time it's rented out.
Okay, and I agree with that. And also, the health and safety compliance inspections, that has to be done, because again, this is a business, and any, any business that is being done in residential neighborhoods that comply with the city and state laws. And quiet hours, that's for sure, that has to be part of it. So, with that, those are my, my suggestions for tonight.
Thank you very much for your thoughts.
All right, so, back to Anaheim, please.
Yes.
Let's go over it again.
Well, basically, that was it. I mean, they ended up settling with the short-term rental owners, and they increased the amortization period through which they could recoup their initial investment as short-term rentals. So, I think as of right now, there is still about maybe a few more years left for some of those short-term rental operators who were operating before the city banned the activity.
And just given the nature of their economy, they had a lot more vacation rentals than other communities, including Glendale. But the point of the amortization is, if, if an owner can show that they are engaging in a certain use that was not unlawful before the time that a city enacts a regulation that makes it unlawful, you have to give them a certain time, amount of time to amortize that, that investment.
Because the argument is that they bought the property with the expectation of recouping their...
And there was no, there was no regulation saying you can't do this, you know, X activity, and so when you're gonna...
Right, then it's a taking otherwise?
It's a, it's not taking, I guess it's more due process violation.
Yes.
Okay. Is that a successful argument?
You have to provide some...
I mean, we were talking about something else today, in which, you know, you changed the, changed the rules after you buy, let's say, a property with the intent of earning income on it. And why isn't that like a rent control? When rent control is permitted, basically, it's the same sort of argument, that you're buying a property intending to obtain income off it, and you change it.
The, well, without getting too deep into the ways...
What sort of amortization are you giving to landlords in that case?
The law, and the takings law, as it pertains to rent control, is, falls a different doctrine in essence, but I think that the, the basis for that in takings law is that you're not entitled to an expectation that you're going to always be able to charge the, the highest amount of rent. And in, in this area, when you have zoning, zone, and as it pertains to zoning, when you're changing the zoning requirements for a particular property, and, and you're changing a permitted use to outlaw use that's been lawful, in many...
So you're talking about a complete outlaw, complete outlaw, rather than a...
Correct.
Or some sort of... Okay. Any questions?
Do you have any cards, Mr. Mayor?
We do have cards. If there are no questions, we'll take the cards next. And the cards are from Carissa Bennett, followed by Gregory Frazier. How much time do you need, Ms. Bennett?
Three minutes.
Got it. Four minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council members, for having, giving us this opportunity, and for actually the excellent presentation on the research they've done on this topic. My name, well, Ms. Carissa Bennett, I've, I am a 30-year resident of Glendale, and I've been impacted, along with several neighbors. I represent 11 neighbors who live in five houses adjacent to 1475, 1455 Dwight Drive, Glendale. It's, it was recently sold to a new owner on February 14th of this year, and in the last four months, this property has been rented to Airbnb and managed by a property management company called Speed Keys by Jason Lee. The ad on Airbnb advertises a five-bedroom home will sleep 12 persons on most weekends and with increasing frequency. My neighbors and I have had to deal with loud outdoor parties late into the night, sometimes including Sunday nights. Since the property has a nice view and a nice deck, like some of the other properties on our street, it is a desirable location to enjoy the city view. So, city views and pools tend to be very popular party-type rentals. The frequency of the loud parties has become unbearable. One recent party was a wedding reception that hired a 40-person limo bus that delivered additional guests to streets already packed with parked cars, which also belong to the guests of the rental. The house has attracted numerous renters who use the private party for private outdoor parties, even though it's not advertised as a party house. Because of the nice view with a nice deck, it is chosen for that purpose, and who typically invite many guests, bringing more noise and more cars congested, congesting the limited available street parking, following the presentations that you just heard. The parties often continue until 2:00 to 4:00 a.m., with a party this past Saturday night lasting until 5:30 a.m. It has become almost impossible to sleep with the loud noise and music part of people partying. We even have double-pane windows, we still have trouble sleeping. We did end up, for the first time, the party that lasted till 5:30 calling the police twice. The first time they came out, told them to reduce the noise, they cut down the music, and we all went back to sleep, and then it got increasingly loud with, not even the loud music, just the drunker they got, the more loud and rambunctious they got. So, I'm 62 years old, and I've spent a lifetime working to buy and pay for the home we have in the hills of Glendale, and it just doesn't seem right that a business can come in and destroy our lives and peaceful surrounding. Due to the multiple and ongoing violations of the city's noise ordinance, our first request, again, representing the 11 neighbors, the five houses around this, this particular property, requests the, to prohibit short-term rentals of less than 30 days, and completely prohibit them in single-family, low-density residential zone R1 and ROS. These single-family hillside homes were purchased to enjoy the abundance of nature and to be removed from the noise and traffic of heavily populated, of the heavily populated areas of the city. In fact, the below description obtained from Glendale, City of Glendale's online Chapter 13.11 residential coding zone emphasizes the purpose of these restricted zones to preserve and protect low-density neighborhoods, to preserve valuable open space, physical features, and scenic resources. There's no question that noise can impact the serenity of nature as well as interfere with the sleep and well-being. Prohibiting these type of rentals would substantially reduce the loud and frequent violations of existing Glendale noise ordinance. I put the noise, the, what I took off the website on the handout, if anybody doesn't have a handout, they have a handout.
We have it.
Okay. And then the other option, if we can't get the first thing, which is our first request, to at least fine the owner of the property for violation of the city's noise ordinance at the maximum rate of $1,000 for each, $1,000 for each violation after the first violation. It is requested the fine be directed to the owner of the property who benefits from the income generated by the rentals. Since almost all the rentals are one-time rentals, and fining the one-time renter doesn't make sense to have any type of impact on future potential renters. Only the owners of fine can inspire the property owner to include notification of noise ordinance. We also would like them to collect a security deposit that could be non-refundable for noise violation or property damage.
Ms. Bennett, are you wrapping it up?
Yes, this is the end. We, the, keep in mind that this particular property, as advertised, typically generates $1,000 per weekend for two nights, in income to the owner, property management company, and Airbnb. The low fine of $2.50 does little to discourage, since the remaining $7.50 per week is still a large financial gain of $39,000 per year for just weekend rentals.
I have, we have, all of us have all of that in front of us.
Okay. And the last thing was just that we haven't, it took us a long time to start calling the police because we were confused, we didn't know what was going on, because we didn't know where to change owners, and we didn't know Airbnb was renting it, we kept seeing... So...
You're like over seven minutes at this point, I'm...
Yeah, we have been, we're now going to, all, all the residents are gonna call the police.
Okay.
But we've been encouraged to do so.
Okay.
And I appreciate you hearing it.
Thank you. We have a question for you.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, I want to congratulate you. Sorry. I would like to congratulate you, you look much younger than what you said.
Oh, thank you.
And you presented well.
Thank you very much.
And I...
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think it's an Asian, it's hard to tell with us Asians.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Gregory Frazier?
Funny, because she said she was 42, so I don't know. And I'm her husband, that's why.
That makes sense.
So, dear council members, we just want to know if 1455 Dwight Drive and the surrounding neighborhood is owned for commercial use as a hotel motel. The owner of the property is operating a hotel motel and causing loud traffic noise, as well as loud music and other loud noise from the property. As a doctor, exposure to prolonged or excessive noise has been shown to cause a range of health problems, ranging from stress, poor concentration, productivity, losses in the workplace, communication difficulties, fatigue from lack of sleep, to more serious issues such as cardiovascular disease, cognitive impairment, anxiety, depression, tinnitus, and hearing loss. Interestingly, it may be the sounds we aren't even aware we're hearing that are affecting us the most, in particular, those we hear when we're asleep. The human ear is extremely sensitive, it never rests, so even when you sleep, your ears are working, picking up and transmitting sounds that are filtered, interpreted by different parts of the brain. It's permanently open channel, so although you may not be aware of it, background noises or traffic or music coming from a neighbor are still being processed, and your body is reacting to them in different ways via the nerves that travel to all parts of the body and the hormones released by the brain. The most obvious is interrupted sleep with its flow on effects of tiredness, impaired memory and creativity, impaired judgment, weakened psychomotor skills. Research has shown that living near hotels, airports, or busy roads, you have a higher incidence of headaches, take more sleeping pills and sedatives, they're more prone to minor accidents, more likely to seek psychiatric treatment. But the most serious outcome, even if you don't wake up, it appears the continual noise sets off the body's acute stress response, which raises blood pressure and heart rate, potentially mobilizing a state of hyperarousal. It is this response that can lead to the cardiovascular disease and other health issues. So, if you have any other questions, let us know, but there are serious health hazards when you have noise from big, you know, homes that are next to you that are doing parties and things like that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Frazier. Mr. Najarian, would you like to go first?
Well, just some comments. So, I'm a, I've been a direct victim of these short-term rentals. The house immediately next to me was used as a short-term rental, a continuous short-term rental. Aside from the noise and the beer cans thrown over into my yard, I had my car broken into, and I do have a police report on file as well. My, the children, my former home, the house that my children live in, has been two or three homes away from that particular home in Montecito Park that Mr., I was gonna ask him, is that the one that he was doing, but got the chair to friends here.
Would Mr. Carpenter go anywhere?
Anyway.
No, but I get it, you're going so long.
And continual rentals of that property on Montecito Drive and El Arbolita, and it has disturbed them at least several, two times a month. So, I have no sympathy for, for that sort of behavior. I've also become aware of the short-term rentals, aside from the immediate disturbance of the neighborhood and neighbors, is the reduction in the housing stock. A city council member previously on the city council indicated that every time his or her parent would come into town, they would stay in a unit in the, it used to be called the ISIS, what do they call it now? Brio.
Brio.
Brio. And that that person owned several, several units in the Brio complex and was renting them out on a short-term basis. And those are units that could have otherwise gone to the housing stock, increasing the housing stock, not directly helping the folks that we saw here renting, asking for rent control, but it certainly adds to the supply of housing, and it shifts the, the supply curve onward. So, I don't see anything good about this, I'll be honest. I mean, if you asked me, you know, where would I put my first check, it would be on a complete ban of all STRs. If you said, well, that's too extreme, I would say it should only be a home sharing where the owner is there present at the time the unit is rented, such as renting a, you know, a room in your house. But I don't see anything good about this, I really don't. They skirt our laws for zoning, they skirt our laws for transit occupancy tax, they skirt our laws for responsibility of being a good neighbor, of keeping the neighborhood clean, of letting the others have their quiet enjoyment of the neighborhood that we've put our life savings into to, to live in Glendale. So, I don't see anything good about this, and I'm, well, I will listen to my colleagues, but I'm really down on this, this whole policy, and I think we need to ban it, and I think we need to make violation of this, at least a misdemeanor under our city municipal ordinance, and really crack down on this sort of stuff. Nothing is, nothing is good about this, so...
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. Ms. Devine?
Okay, well, I agree with Mr. or Councilmember Najarian. I, I haven't been affected by a short-term rental, I've just been affected by a neighbor that does the exact same thing, and there is no doing, you can't do anything about that except, chief. Anyway, I'm of the same thinking that, first of all, we should ban entirely short-term rentals, the vacation rentals, I'm saying, the vacation rentals. I see no, you know, we have hotels for short-term rentals, like for a vacation, for a weekend, I think that would be just as adequate as anything. I think that I am also looking at the sharing of a home, the homeowner must be on the premises. I don't think there's any other way of controlling the noise, the traffic, and all the other negative impacts. If the owner is there, they can see what's going on and stop it, kick the people out or whatever they want to do. I also think that we should have them register, the BRC, I think that we should be collecting the TOT, and I also think that we need to do more outreach with homeowners that want to be involved in a program like this, and also look at negotiating with hosting platforms so that we don't need to hire staff, because sometimes if we get into the weeds on this, we, it might mean two or three staff members, and so I think if we can eliminate that, that aspect of it, and, and use a, a hosting platform, that would, that would serve us well, and that's where I stand.
Okay, so, let me, so that I understand, so you're just for prohibition, you're for a ban?
That would be my first question.
You're not for a ban, you're for...
Ban on, I'm for a ban on vacation rentals, but I, I would be for short-term rentals with, with the sharing concept.
Oh, for sharing.
The owner has to be on the front.
Where Ruben's house is rented out, but not the entire house.
Yes, correct, the owner is there, on site.
Thank you for that, Clark.
I want to repeat, basically, they already said what I wanted to say. We have short-term living units. I mean, giving to Airbnb or any other company, we are making harder for residents of Glendale to find housing unit to live in it. to find housing unit to live in it. Little bit earlier, I was saying, at short-term housing units, we have to, you know, contribute $100 million for, you know, for affordable housing. This is the same way. We are making affordable for rent even harder and harder. So, I agree with both my colleagues, the Najarian, Councilmember Najarian, and Councilmember Devine, and also sometimes the owner of the property is having problem to pay the, I mean, their mortgages if they are living in the unit. So, maybe they want to rent a room to another person. I'm in favor of it. That's my comment.
So, you, you are also in support of home sharing, but you're otherwise opposed to any shorter rentals? And I want to go back to you, Mr. Najarian, if you don't mind. Are you open to the idea of the, of making exception for home sharing arrangements?
So, the, the home sharing, as I understand, is still a, would be still a short-term process, so for a weekend or for a few days, come into my home. I...
Now, what, I'm sorry.
Home sharing is...
Comment on that?
Because if it's longer term, I don't think that's a problem. You know, having a roommate for longer than a month.
But that's just, that's just a roommate arrangement.
Right. But we're talking about a short...
Someone uses Airbnb to rent a room in a house.
Yeah.
And the owner is present.
Owner to be present, yes.
How many support that?
Well, two support that. And I'm, I'm inclined to support it if we can receive some assurance that we can monitor as to whether there's actually someone on the premises. I mean, they can, what's to stop a renter, I'm sorry, a landlord from misrepresenting that they're actually present on the premises, but I, but use it as a short-term rental?
Well, therein lies the issue.
The problem, right.
And we would rely on, you know, complaints and we would investigate as best we can. And I just want to make a comment about enforcement. We can use the hosting platform if they agree to collect TOTs, but unfortunately, the enforcement part, we would have to take the burden on ourselves, so it'd probably involve hiring more code enforcement staff. I'll defer to Mr. Lansfame on that.
And, and we're look, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, in terms of staffing, that would be necessary for a program such as, that has been described in terms of the, the sharing, the home sharing piece. We would need at least, we believe at this point, and we haven't looked at it in depth quite yet, but at least one, if not two, code enforcement type of employees, or one code enforcement and one administrative staff to be able to follow up on, on these types of items.
In other words, it's staff's position that this is too much of a headache, requiring too much of an expense, and therefore...
You know, honestly, I mean, this, this issue is here, and it's something that, that is happening behind us, in front of us. It's, you know, if you go on Airbnb, you can find homes in Glendale today.
If, if the landlord, we say, if landlord is giving portion of his house or a few rooms to another person, so the neighbors, they know the landlord, so this is not something that's hard to figure out, that this is rented out or this is, so because neighbors, they know their neighbors.
Sure.
Assuming they complain.
Yeah.
Assuming they know their neighbors.
There has to be a complaint, too. Right. There are a number of assumptions in place, right? And, and so, in the case where we have a, a few of our, our neighbors here from a particular neighborhood, they know their neighbors, they know who purchased the home.
Right.
There are other, other areas where folks may not know their neighbors, unfortunately, as crazy as that may sound. They don't know who may have purchased the house and don't understand what may be happening in that home. And so, there is an enforcement piece of this that we don't have experience in as of yet in terms of what it would take, but we do know that it would take at least one individual, possibly two, to make sure that we're, you know, enforcing appropriately and keeping track appropriately.
Do we know whether the TOTs or whatever other benefits the city gets from this will be enough, sufficient to even pay for one additional code enforcement person?
In terms of home sharing, I'm not sure, but I, we do have Armin Harkalia, our, our revenue manager here, who has been really monitoring this for the last few years and, and may have some, some thoughts on it. Armin?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. So, if the city council chooses to allow the, the hosted rentals, let's say up to 90 days within, within the 365 days, that's about 25% of, throughout the year. So, that will generate approximately $300,000 to $500,000 annually from the TOT, but if we put this program together where, where we require application fee, that could generate additional maybe $100,000. So, it really varies how, you know, based on the council direction, we, we will recover that cost, and for the code enforcement officer, maybe $100,000 a year, the fully loaded with any, with the benefits. So, that could be, you know, one position or two positions that the revenue could support.
And I would just note that we're kind of at the 30,000-foot level right now, so if this is the direction that, again, the council wants us to look at further, that, that's certainly something we'll do. We'll be looking at what are the impacts legally, what other steps can we do, whether it's registration, business registration or some other to require them. And then remember, as we talked about, the Santa Monica case is on appeal, and if that, if Santa Monica is victorious in that case ultimately before the Ninth Circuit, then we'll have another tool, which is to just require the, the Airbnbs of the world to not register, not, not take any reservations from anybody that doesn't have a registration with the city. That's something we can sort of wait, wait and see how that turns out. So, there's some moving pieces to it, but I mean, if the council wants to, to look at this where we're banning the vacation rentals but allowing the home sharing, then the, the suggestion is to give us that direction and we'll go start, start the process of looking at what ordinances might work best for us, and then look at some of these other factors, and we, we can bring that back to you later date.
And the, and the options can be provided in terms of that piece, whether you limit it to 90 days, 120 days, no limitations, et cetera, and what the TOT can, can mean.
Yeah. You typically see that limitation, that 90-day, for example, Pasadena has, that's, they, they allow Pasadena homeowners to rent out their house in its entirety, as long as it's their primary residence, but they put the 90-day cap on it. But if you're only looking at home sharing as an option, query whether you need that additional restriction. I don't know, I don't know, have there been cities that have both the home sharing and the time limitation, or is it just sort of...
Yes, Santa Monica.
Okay.
And what's their day limit?
It's very close to 90, maybe 120. You'd have to look.
How do they come up with this number? What's, what's the rationale?
I think it's just a outreach to, you know, owners, how long do you typically rent out? And Los Angeles had originally 180-day cap, and it was reduced as they were debating this. So, I think it's just, it's their best estimate of what's reasonable, I believe.
And the number of people possibly coming and going, you know, within a neighborhood.
Not that they're friends with Santa Monica, but they probably were looking at the strictest regulations they could without, without, you know, subject to some other challenges that they're looking at. I mean, that's generally kind of how they look at some of these things.
I, I look at it as, we, we have 400 and maybe more already out there, and we're starting to get more and more and more complaints. So, that means that this problem, this issue is just growing exponentially.
Well, because we left the vacuum.
Yes, right, right. So, I think we have to, we have to do something and, and act on this, so I...
Mr. Najarian?
I think if we enforce, if we enforce it, little by little, we're going to have less problem. We don't permanently have people to be on the lookout or hire more people. I remember in 1992, when Rodney King's, King's problem, I mean, the police, I mean, beating Rodney King, and then there was a riot, came from South Los Angeles, probably. They came all the way to Chinatown, and there was reporter, I was there, and I was, they were asking this rioters, let's name them, are you going, so it was closed. And I asked, and they were asking them, are you going to Glendale? And they said, no, 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 no. I mean, this is credit to our police department. There is no policing Glendale, they are crazy. We are not going to go to Glendale, so.
For the record, our police are not crazy.
No, I just want to say that what they were, rioters were saying, so if we don't let anybody to rent it to Airbnb in the beginning, maybe we're going to have some hard time to enforce it, but later, they, all they will say, no, no, in Glendale, I can't rent the apartment or the unit to anybody. I think that's what's going to happen in a little bit while.
Okay. Well, I, you know, this is a very important quality of life issue for our residents in our city. As you said, Councilmember Devine, and actually all of you, my colleagues, are, there are more of these popping up, and it seems like the less regulated things are, the more problematic they are. And I'm glad that we're here, the four of us are here to discuss this and, you know, make a decision as to how we want to address this issue, because as our residents were indicating, they've become hostages to, to one neighboring property, and that's just not fair. And unless we do something now, that's going to be a recurring theme in our city. I, I understand, well, first of all, I'm, I'm against the short-term vacation rentals because of all the reasons that were brought up by staff and all the reasons that you all listed. And, you know, the issue of taking low-income or affordable housing units off the market is sort of, it seals the deal for me. There's no way I'm going to agree to that, so. For sure, no vacation rentals, I don't support it. It's not for our city. Sorry, do it somewhere else. In terms of home sharing, clearly having someone on the premises mitigates the risk of people going crazy and, and, you know, misbehaving and acting irresponsibly and thereby victimizing the neighbors. I'm just worried about monitoring all that, and if these rentals are, you know, assuming that, of course, the rent, the landlord misrepresents their status as a, on, on the premises landlord, if the rent is high enough, some of these renters or landlords may be willing to take the risk and, and pay a fine after the fact, and that's going to wreak havoc on our, on our staff and our, and our resources too, because we have to, I mean, someone has to deal with these, and that's going to cost money and take away time from our staff. So, I also understand that, you know, if people are, you know, it's their property, if they're there and they're basically with their presence guaranteeing certain standards on that property, it's unfair to deprive them of the ability to generate an income. So, I'm kind of split on that issue.
Do we have to narrow that down that precisely? I mean, you, you've heard some of our comments.
We've heard some of it. If you want to initiate, we can, you know, we can initiate with somewhat with the direction to make changes to the zoning code and the other provisions of the municipal code. Assume that for home sharing, if, if it's home, it ends up being home sharing, you'd want TOT, then staff can work on changes and then, and then work with the planning commission and get their feedback and then bring it back to you. If, if you want to look at a ban on the vacation rentals and then look at home sharing and then ultimately, that you're not making a decision here today, you're making a decision to bring it back at a later date.
The only piece that, that I have a little bit of pause is, is the fact, I mean, I think it's clear that you want to have a ban on the, the rental piece in terms of vacation homes, et cetera.
Right.
I think we have clear direction from all council from that perspective. In terms of the other piece, again, we can do the work, I just don't want us to go and do a whole lot of work, take it to planning commission. Again, full well understanding that, you know, the vote may, may change based on the information you receive. I just want there to be at least some level of comfort on the council before we spend the, the time from the staff to go do some of this.
Okay. So, if we don't vote one way or another on home sharing, allowing it or, I guess, banning it today, it'll, it has to go, staff has to prepare some report that it goes to planning commission?
Yes.
Correct.
For the zoning...
If you initiate, if you initiate the code amendments, then it'll have to go to planning commission. And I think if you, if we don't ultimately take any action on home sharing, it would be permitted, arguably. So, if you don't do anything, if you, if you take an action, for example, and we come back later with an ordinance to ban vacation rentals, but we're silent and everything else, then arguably, home share is going to be permitted unless you express, we're going to be asking for a direction, make it clear one way or the other, that we're allowing home sharing or we're not. So, at that time, you can make that decision.
So, why don't we deal with the home sharing right now then?
Yeah.
Deal with home sharing, oh, I'll support it if we put a, a limit, day limit on it?
Maximum, yeah.
I don't know. Councilman Najarian, almost...
Present on the premises.
On site, onsite.
I would, I would go along with your suggestion.
Could you say home sharing with a number of days limit?
Yeah, like a 30-day limit.
30 days for the whole calendar year, is that?
Yes, or, yeah.
But you can rent there some rooms for long-term.
Long-term, long-term.
Link, long-term.
Yeah, long-term leases would be fine, but short-term leases at less than 30 days would be subject to...
Less than 30 days.
But would you want a total cap in number of days per year, like 90, or are you saying you want it to be 30, you want it to be capped at 30? I mean, my suggestion, if you want to look at...
If the standard is 90 and...
My suggestion, if you want to look at home sharing with a cap, then that'd be the direction, and then we'll, we'll go off.
Okay.
And we'll get input from planning commission.
Right, yes.
Let's do that then.
I would go for that.
Let's do that. And also, we want to, I think we definitely want to deal with the penalties for violation of, I guess it would be only the home sharing.
Sure.
We want to make them, I think, weighty enough for, for it to have a preemptive effect on, on people from violating it.
We'll include those, any violation, if, if we make this activity illegal, any violation becomes a misdemeanor. Also, we look at the fine schedule for the administrative citations, that comes, that becomes part of it, and that comes to as well.
Right. I, I guess I'm, maybe I should define what I'm saying. If someone represents their sort of situation as a home sharing and it turns out that they're not, they're, they're not on the premises, there has to be some punishment for it, right?
Right.
Yeah, yes. That'd be, I mean, the, the direction I'm hearing, that would ultimately be a violation of municipal code with all the penalties that come with that.
And I'm saying, what are the penalties that come with that? Let's make sure those penalties are harsh enough so that folks don't engage in that kind of activity. Yeah, as a deterrent.
Bring you a range of options on that.
Okay.
And, and would it be prudent for us to also recommend a BRC that each of them has to register?
Yes, you can.
Yes, and, and we may even want to have a separate registration just for this, but we'll look at how that works with BRCs.
Okay, yeah, perfect. And the TOT, anything on that? Yeah, that as well.
Absolutely.
Again, I would, I would recommend to the council that you direct us to negotiate with the platforms so that they're collecting it upfront, and giving it to Mr. Har...
And do we have, do we then have the ti, the sort of, the kind of authority to only limit it to those platforms that do, that are willing to collect the TOTs?
Hmm. It becomes difficult, I think, to do that, but we look at it, we'll look at how we...
Look at that, yeah, because that cuts down on our administrative costs. Any other direction you need from us?
Just a public service announcement, the, the neighbors here, the community members here found out, if there are parties, please call the police department, don't hesitate, and, because we do have an ordinance for that, and we do have penalties for that in place now.
And the cur, and the time is, is it 10 or 11? Chief, 10?
It, it's, it's noise, level of noise.
Level of noise.
Anytime.
And what are the penalties?
The penalties are, I know chief is coming up, I think they're $500 go to $1,000.
Under the ordinance you passed, we can issue a notice, our second response is $250. This response after that is $500, and then it increases $200 per response until it hits $1,100, but on top of that is also included our response, the cost of the actual police response to deal with the subsequent parties. So, the bill can be significantly higher than just the, the civil penalty that's attached via the ordinance.
And do we have such violators?
We do.
We recently sent a bill out, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, last week for a little over $10,000.
That goes to the landlord, I assume?
Yes.
And because the notice we issue to the responsible party is good for 90 days, so any subsequent response within that timeframe will add to both the penalties and the...
So, someone within 90 days managed to rack up a $10,000 fine from the city?
They did.
Yes.
Wow.
They did. Combination of fines and our, and our, and the cost of our response. Combination of fines and our, and our, and the cost of our response to the parties.
So, so it behooves the neighbors to make those phone calls?
It does.
Absolutely.
That's, that's how, how it helps, and we will, we track them in our computers, so once we know we have a particular location, that's a problem, it's not just...
Can I ask you how many, how many violations that included?
I don't know off the top of my head, I actually have to go look at that.
There's a reason, I mean, the reason I ask is if I'm, I'm wondering if they rented it out for, let's say, 30 days and charged $3,000 every time they rent it out, I mean, the math works out in their favor. All of a sudden, the $10,000 fine doesn't sound all that horrible.
Well, I will, I will tell you that on, I, I have received an initial response to that letter, and they are appealing it, so I think it might be...
Well, they may be greedy.
They, they, they may, it may, it may be significant, but it does, it does add up.
Can you check on how many violations that is?
So, so we're in the office, I have it, I just don't have it.
We'll provide you a short write-up on that, so you're all aware of how that kind of happened.
Remember, it's not just the fines, it's the cost of reimbursement.
Right, for the police time, right?
Right.
Yes.
Must be some location, too, huh? Wow.
No, this was the property owner family, or it was somebody who rented the unit?
The, I believe the parties were a result of people who rented the unit, but the responsible party is still the owner, and so ultimately, we track down the owner and provide them with the notices, and ultimately, we'll send them the bill.
Beneficiary, and therefore the responsible party.
Right.
Okay, thank you, chief. Do the, the staff have enough direction?
Can we just get a motion to initiate, which is 8A1, and what I'm hearing is the ban on vacation rentals, allowing home sharing with a cap to be determined, registration, some registration requirement, TOT agreements with the, with the platforms, and appropriate fines and penalties.
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. What is next on the agenda, Mr. Clerk?
Next on the agenda is oral communications. Discussion is limited in time, is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Members of the council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision, and City Manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
Okay, thank you very much, and we have several speakers tonight. First, Roseanne Calaba, followed by Samuel Abgarian.
Good evening, council, um...
Good evening.
Mayor and councilpeople and administrators from Glendale. My name is Roseanne Calaba, and I'm here talking about rent control. I'm against rent control. We have worked our whole lifetime for our pension by having a unit to give us our pension. I believe rent control is socialism. When you control rent and anything you control, are you controlling the amount of money that a service person can charge us to repair things? The electric, electricians, the plumbers, the air-conditioned people, all cover services, those people have... I think you need to hear both sides of the story, and I have, and, and just because they were so, I wish the tenant people were here today to see me. I waited, I'm the last one, fine, but this, there's two sides to the story. I'm not a gouging person, that's, and a whole lifetime to get something, and now just controlling, it's controlling. We have to have free enterprise to, and be considerate of each other, and that's how my life was taught, and not say, well, I, I'm, that somebody, just because you are a big group or something, doesn't make it right. It's right when it's good for everybody. When you're getting a service that people have worked their life to make a service for you, I'm not, I'm, and, and you're char, because maybe a few are paying, or is charging a lot of rent, I don't know, but this is not good. It's, it's a pension, like you've got pensions, and that's why we saved our money to invest in a unit. Do you understand? And that's what I wanted you to understand. I don't know if, if you realize where I'm coming from, too. We're all working, I, I need to, we need to pay for our services. Who's going to pay for my, I don't have the pension. Who's gonna take care of me in my old age? I have to pay for myself for the old age, right? And I'm old. Do you understand what I'm talking about? There's two sides to the story, and I hope you understand it. When, I work, that, that building didn't come to me, I worked for it, we worked to, to get it, and you must understand that. And now that, that somebody's gonna control it, you don't control how much I have, the serviceman comes, okay, I'm gonna fix it, this is how much it costs, well, I have to pay that. Do you, you must understand that, you have to be. It's, it's logical for everybody. We all have, have to think of each other, and you can't just put somebody down because maybe there's, I'm only one person or a few owners, and there's many tenants. There's good and bad tenants and good and bad landlords. And, and, and that, it, like I'm saying, it's my pension, and now what? You're gonna restrict things, I have to pay my bills, then I'm gonna have to figure out how I'm gonna pay the bills to repair the buildings, because you're, you're planning whatever you're planning. Do you, you must understand. And I wanted, and I'm the last one to talk, all the, those tenants are here, they're in a big group with shirts on and everything, a big union, all big guys, that they got their thing together. Well, I don't have a big guy to be together with anybody, but I'm telling you what's going on in my life. So I hope you understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calaba. Samuel Abgarian, followed by Ellen Asatrian.
Honorable Mayor Sinanian, councilmembers, city staff, my name is Ellen Asatrian. I'm here on behalf of Carmel Partners today with respect to the Jackson Street project. Wanted to come and invite you and the community to three open houses that we've scheduled for, for the project, as we'd like to showcase it, get feedback from the community. The three open houses will take place on Thursday, October 11, 5:30 to 7:30 p.m., and on Saturday, October 13 and October 20, from noon to 3 p.m. at the Glendale Unified School District Boardroom, which is located at 223 North Jackson Street, Glendale, California, 91206. As you may be aware, we've made significant changes to the project to meet the needs of the community, and we look forward to obtaining additional feedback at these open houses and hope to see you there. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ellen. And that's the last speaker card that we have. Mr. City Attorney, do we have new business?
We have four items.
We have four items.
We have four items, sorry.
Pass them out?
Yeah, I did.
Should I read Mr. Garpetian's?
If you would, sir.
Okay, 'cause I know each of us had one.
Ms. Devine? She, Ms. Devine is going on vacation, she's traveling, so she wanted to call in a little early.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city attorney's office is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement with McCune and Harbor, Dana J. McCune, to assist the city attorney in connection with an employment lawsuit, Agajanian versus the City of Glendale. The retainer agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap for the handling of said matter.
Um, well, we don't have, we don't have a quorum on this side, and we can't vote on this, can we?
Did somebody, did somebody recuse himself?
Didn't, Argentinian, Mr. Argentinian recused himself in closed session, so he can't vote on this.
Uh, okay.
So we'll, let's move this to the next, to next week.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, let's move on to the next.
Quorum of the present, I don't know, we lose the quorum?
No, you don't have quorum. Yeah. Okay.
Next. Uh, I move that the city attorney's office is authorized to file a cross complaint against the appropriate parties for the purpose of protecting the city's interests in the matter of Ledisma versus City of Glendale. The retainer agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap for the handling of said matter.
Okay. Second. Will you second it, please?
Yes.
May we have the roll call, please?
Thank you. Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine? Garpetian?
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, actually, Mr. Najarian's prior motion, I think we can take it, because Mr., Councilmember Agajanian can recuse, can abstain, and, and it'll still be majority of the quorum. I apologize, I should have cut that earlier.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's what you were saying.
Okay.
So that motion actually is...
Well, there's a motion. Now, there's a second. May we have the roll call, please? On the Argentinian matter.
Right.
Yes.
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Abstained.
Say first?
Yes.
No, abstain.
Abstain, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Agajanian abstains. Devine? Garpetian?
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, please, Mr. Argentinian?
Okay. I move that city attorney's office is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement with McCune and Harbor to assist the city attorney in connection with an employment lawsuit at the Dian versus City of Glendale. The retainer agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap for the handling of said matter.
Second.
May we have the roll call?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine? Garpetian?
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes.
We had another item, but I think Councilmember Devine walked off with it, so we'll just bring it back next week. It wasn't time-sensitive.
She walked off with it?
Well, I guess it's going to... It, it's not time-sensitive, we'll bring it back next week.
South Africa, yeah. Johannesburg. You don't have a copy? Are we done? Are we done?
I'll remember that.
Okay, so...
Move to adjourn?
Thank you. Second. We're adjourned at 8:41 p.m.